We call this meeting to order. Thank you, everybody, for being here this evening. We will observe our moment of silent reflection followed by the pledge. Thank you very much.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you again for being here this evening. Up on the agenda next is the approval of previous meeting minutes. You have a long list of minutes dating back from 2:20 all the way to 3:18. You see the list in front of you. All the minutes have been received. If there are no additions or corrections to any of the sets of minutes, I would appreciate a motion and a second to approve.
So moved.
Motion by Rager, second by Randall. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Likes on opposed, that like sign or that motion is carried unanimously. Okay. Since everybody's here for, I think I know what everyone's here for, I would ask Mr. Major to come up front. Seems like we've been here before.
We have.
Get to memorize it. I get to regurgitate it to me from when we did this once before, so.
Got it.
All right. This is an official oath of office for the city of Buckhannon to welcome Dylan Ray Major back to our city as a sworn city police officer. So, sir, would you please raise your right hand and repeat after me? I, Dylan Ray Major.
I, Dylan Ray Major.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
That I will of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of West Virginia.
Constitution of the state of West Virginia.
The Charter and ordinances of the city of Buckhannon, West Virginia.
The ordinance and ordinance of Buckhannon, West Virginia.
And faithfully discharge my duties.
And faithfully discharge my duties.
As a police officer.
As a police officer.
Of the said city.
Of said city.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Welcome home, God. Well, you got you got quite the fan club here. If they don't leave after you leave, I'm gonna wonder what's going on. Anything you want to say? The floor is yours.
The floor is mine. All right. Thank you, guys, seriously. I left about seven months ago chasing a dream that I thought would be great, but at the end of the day, this is home. I love every single one of y'all from the bottom of my heart. Tell everybody that every single day, so appreciate it, everybody. Thank you, guys, for having me back. I'm ready to hit the ground running and make this town as safe as I can. Thank you again.
The headliner, that's why you don't have the headliner first.
I know. We should have put that at the very, very.
Is the room going empty?
I'm surprised they didn't stay for events.
Hey, Shane, I'm pretty sure that crowd tested the fire code maximum that we're allowed to have in here.
I think it did.
All right. I've made the mistake of giving those away before. I have to get, there was a note on here that says, return to Teresa.
Oh, did you give it away?
I have given it away before, and then we don't know where it goes.
Oh, you kept it.
I kept it, yeah. Okay. We are to public comment, so we'll go down the list here of who has signed in to speak before we get to recognition of guests. And while we're taking care of a few housekeeping items, gentlemen, is it okay if we hold you for a little bit? Because we need to enter into an executive session relative to property matters, so I want to kind of get down through the agenda a little ways before we before we do that. Is that okay? All right. So, public comment will begin with Jody Light. And we have a paper up here and a and a pen.
Good evening. Great to be back again, and I just wanted to give you a few updates. Not everything, man, I can't give you everything all at once. But this is our 10th anniversary, as you know, and we're very excited, June 12 through the 14th. We're having the normal things on your list there that you've seen us do before. We are having arts and crafts, some hot bands Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Laura Clark Falconry, which is Birds of Prey from West Virginia, kids' activities and so forth. We are still projecting 45 to 50 barbecue teams from 15 to 20 states. No, probably I don't have any barbecue tonight, but we'll work on that. We are tickled. We do have the 2024 and the 2023 Kansas City Barbecue World Champions, not United States, World Champions, coming to compete. Those folks also won the 2024 and the 2023 Jack Daniels International Barbecue Tournament. Again, world champions. So these are heavy hitters. We also happen to have, that I know of so far, the president and the vice president of the Kansas City Barbecue Society Association, they'll be competing here, which is pretty honorable to come to our little fair city, so we're a little tickled about that. The thing I wanted to touch on is a few new things that we haven't announced yet, and we have some others that we will be announcing. And for, I think, we said for Dave Thomas, we have the new inflatable bumper cars for kids and adults that I think will be fun. Some of you see them before, don't know when they've been around, but we thought that would be kind of fun. Foster Marketing's gonna do that. We're real excited. We tried for a couple of years. We had it once before, the West Virginia DNR or DEP Mobile Aquarium. If you haven't seen it before, it's a 2,000 gallon mobile aquarium. DNR will bring that in. They will fill it and they will actually go out and trap catch, or whatever you want to call it, fish that are native to West Virginia. It's a really nice exhibit. They have a lot of pictures, a lot of information. Usually there's at least one or two DNR people there to tell you about the fish. And I know when we had it at the asylum a few years ago, I looked at those fish and went, oh, my gosh, if there's fish like that, I'm never swimming in anything in West Virginia, because there's some strange, strange-looking fish that are native to West Virginia. So we're excited about that. That's a really good, public, free thing. We are bringing back, by popular demand, we didn't have them last year, but we have the dinorar shows. Those were amazing. We had people were having it so she could bring her kids just for the dinosaur show. So there's three shows at interval intervals on Friday and Saturday, again, all free. And Jerry hasn't made it yet, so I'll tell you a little bit about that. We're doing everything, if you notice, the little pin you got and our little logo, everything is about celebrating. And you can't have celebration without cake. So a lot of the things you'll see this year are focused around the cake and, there you go, John, celebrating, celebrating that kind of thing. And one of the things, we're gonna have a kids' cake decorating contest. We, as the barbecue, will furnish cakes, the decorating, basic supplies and things like that. Backs End is sponsoring that. So we're gonna have three age divisions. There'll be elementary kids, middle school kids, and high school kids, mainly that Pro Start. And we, Jerry's met with a lot of those. We're working with, hopefully, the Greenbrow will entertain some of the winners down there to work with their pastry chef, and he actually may be one of our judges. So we think that'll be kind of a fun thing to do. And also, I wanted to give you a little bit more breakdown on the hourly door prizes. I don't think this has ever been done that we know of, and we're excited about it. We want to bring people to town. We want them to come to town, stay to town, shop, eat, and so forth. So why do people come? For a variety of things, but one of them is to win stuff. So everybody that comes, we'll have a tent set up. Everyone will get a free ticket, kids and adults, when they come, hand stamped. If they want to buy additional tickets based on what prizes are out there, they can buy them for a whopping dollar apiece. We've already gotten a Blackstone Griddle, about $300 worth, some $50 gift cards, dinner for four at one of the local restaurants. We have some things for bed and breakfast coming in. We went to Tourism Day, so we've got a lot of those good things coming, overnights and whitewater rafting and things like this. So they're not just small items, mostly pretty good-sized prizes, and we'll start publicizing what those are. So we thought that was kind of a good thing. We hope that'll bring people. And if you come Thursday, your Thursday ticket doesn't count on Friday and Saturday, so we want to come back. That's the whole idea about bringing tourism to town, is it heads in beds and people in restaurants and shopping in our town. That's what we're after. The last thing I want to mention again is our Fish Fry. That's coming up. Our, it was a successful fundraiser in the fall, and nobody else is doing it. We thought that's a good thing to do. People love fish, so you have barbecue in June, but in May, you can have all-you-can-eat fish. I think Jack was there, and I know some, no, you didn't make this one, did you? I know Pam was there. So we hope that'll go over really well. We have tickets, and they'll be at the Chamber at Mama Roma's, Bicentennial Inn, but it isn't all-you-can-eat, $20. I don't know where you can go anywhere and get any meal for all-you-can-eat for $20. So if you have any questions, I'm happy. I didn't want to take a lot of your time, but appreciate your support, as always, and look forward to seeing a lot of you there. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. We have another four or five little bit larger surprises coming, but I just didn't want to throw all the pigs in a blanket out at one time. So we'll just give you a few teasers, and then we'll give you some more at the next time.
Probably takes a bunch.
I know, I know. There's a couple you're gonna be surprised at, trust me.
Thank you.
Yes, anything? Jack?
The Fish Fry is planned to be outside?
Yes, out at the pavilion, yes. Friday, May 2nd, 4 to 7. And again, you can get the tickets even online at our website. All right. Thank you again for your support.
Thank you. Okay. Up next is Amanda Hayes. We've got a presentation from the Downtown Decorating Committee.
Good evening. Thanks for having me. I have a pre-PowerPoint that Mr. Sanders is going to go through, so I'll give him a minute to pull that up. And we have, basically, we want to add to the decor downtown for Christmas. And even though it's March, it's not too early to start thinking about it, and we need to get things ordered to have in place for this fall.
Slide show up there on the, over to the right, right, see, there's a slideshow up by here. I think you.
There you go.
So you may recognize some of these pictures because they're the mayor's, and I borrowed them from the city Facebook page, but I'll deal with it. So this is our downtown at Christmas, and you can see the wreaths and.
Wait, wait, too, you didn't take any pictures?
I guess not.
And some garland on the poles. When I told someone that I was coming here tonight to talk about Christmas decorations, they said good because ours are a little underwhelming. So if you look at neighboring towns, we seem to be falling just a little bit behind on on street decor in this regard. So we're hoping that we can add to what we have. Go to the next slide. This is from above with a drone shot and just over all. Our downtown is beautiful, and up here it looks really nice, but when you get closer, we just want to add a little bit more festive decor. Go to the next slide. This is an example of something that we want to put over Main Street. It will not have the black background. I did that so you could actually see it better, but it's poinsettias and they're lit, LED lighting, it's a 40-foot string across. And it's always been my dream, as long as I've been on this Downtown Decor Committee, to have something over Main Street that's lit at Christmas, like a lot of other towns do. So we thought we could start with one piece over the center block. And this is that same picture from earlier, but if you look closely, you can see that some poinsettias have been added to the light poles. So what we're proposing is 40, I'm sorry, four-foot poinsettias, and there'd be 24 of them, and they would basically cover the main city blocks downtown. We don't want to do away with the Christmas wreaths. We think they can be put in other areas, at Jawbone and on the side streets and farther out. So we'd still be using what we have, and we wouldn't be wasting it. We'd just be adding to it and making downtown more special.
So the height on those, each poinsettia is four foot?
Yes. We looked at some bigger options, but after consulting with the street department, we were told it wouldn't fit on the poles.
That, and if a larger truck comes through, if they hang out and they come down too far, they'll get they'll get knocked over.
Go to the next slide. So that's a close-up look of what we're representing, and there'd be 24 of those at the top, and then one of the 40 feet light strands at the bottom.
Do we have, where's Ethan? Do we have the power available on the upper, where would, I guess, where would the power source come from for the for the lights over the street?
That was my concern. Right now, there isn't any, because it's always just been the banners. We would have to get with the building owners and get some source of power there, run it from the little streetlights on Main Street now.
Okay.
But as it sits right now, there's nothing there.
That's what I, that's what I was thinking.
What buildings are, do they, those hang from now, the banners? What buildings are they? Are they CJ's buildings?
Well, on one side of the street, it's CJ's building. It's the, over the, where the insurance agency was, where the where the Manufacturers Association is now, and then to Stone Tower.
Just to clarify, so you're saying that dark portions of that are, that's not existent?
Right. That's bad for the job on my part, because I don't know how to do exactly, but that just makes you be able to see the lights better.
All right, just the three sections of lights.
Poinsettias are independent, or they're not, they're lit?
Yeah, they're not on any kind of banner themselves.
And then the next slide is just our amount. We're asking for $15,000. Right now, we have a quote for all of these items that comes in at just a little bit over $14,000. That quote is a 35% discount off of the standard price, and it's only good for a limited time. I believe we have it locked in through tomorrow.
It started out 1:00 to 7:00, and I got on the phone and called and said, we don't have another meeting till the 20th, and he says, I need an answer by Friday evening, the 21st, for that price.
This was your committee?
Yeah.
That you chaired?
Well, here's the thing. Before before we, before we can, my, just my opinion, before before we go and purchase something to go over the street, we need to figure out what the power source is gonna be. Because I don't want extension cords stuck everywhere. That that'll take away from the whole point of having of having nice Christmas decorations. I'm not saying it can't be done. I just want to make sure that we can figure it out to where it's not intrusive looking.
I agree.
I understand.
And we can't put, we need, if we're gonna ask a building owner to to borrow this brunt, we need to make sure that they're.
Right, understand that, but in the meantime, even if we can't end up using that, we could use it at Jawbone, or we could use it here, even on the front of City Hall, if we needed to.
This is the first time I've seen the photos, so so I'm gonna say I can't make a decision tonight. This is this is a pretty big change, and I understand what you're saying, Amanda, you feel like, and you feel, other people have said to you, they feel like we've got a tired look, or whatever. I don't want to put words in your mouth, whatever you said. I think we have a classy look. I think we have a hallmark look, and I don't want to immediately bounce from that, and that's one person's opinion, so.
Well, I think that's why we have committees, because committees make those decisions.
No, they make recommendations.
Well, well, but I understand that.
They don't make the decision.
Well, right, but I mean, we do make recommendations.
Right.
And this, you know, we kind of go through this every year, don't we, Amanda?
Well, I, hey, that's why you're starting in March. I don't, you know, and I'm not gonna be pushed into.
I'm just not gonna save the 35%.
I'm not, I'm not gonna be pushed into that, because that's a marketing, that's a marketing ploy, in my opinion, you know, so.
I will say there's several options. We went with poinsettias because a lot of towns around us have snowflakes, and so we wanted to stand out and do something a little bit different. There are a lot of other options we could have gone with, but if you look at Weston, Elkins, Bridgeport, they have the snowflakes, so something that was set by Keenan and Park, we thought, poinsettias.
I don't disagree that we need a little bit more downtown at Christmas time. Don't disagree with that one bit. I will say this, though, and I had this conversation with Jerry back when the garland was going up this year. A lot of the lights don't work. The lights are also really dirty because the the traffic through the street, and you know what happens in the wintertime, it is the nasty salt and cinders get all over the lights. There, if you if you pay close attention to the garland that we put up, there's not a lot of lights. The lights we do have, not all of them work, and a lot of them are dirty. I'm wondering, is, would our resources be better spent to refresh our garland and lights, add more lights to make the garland and the and the light poles stand out more versus putting the poinsettias? I'm just thinking out loud, because, you know, I, I can't, this is a big change, and and big changes in small towns are not always the most welcomed. You know, people, a lot of times, live in small towns because small towns rarely change, and they like that. So I'd say if we were in Columbus, how about? But we are, we are in a community that doesn't, that likes what it likes. So I'm just wondering if that wouldn't make more sense? And then we could look at something that goes over the street that lights up if we can work work the power out.
I don't agree with you, I'm sorry. That with what we've had is 15 years old at least, and people are arguing, and they may comment, it's the tired of the same, looking the same way. And all you're gonna do is light up what we still have, there's not a different look about it, it's still gonna be the wreaths around the lights, sticking out from the lights. And we wanted to use those and start, you know, there's businesses on the side streets, and they would like to have a little bit of, you know, Christmas, they're going, you know, on the side streets, too. So that's, that's why we wanted to use the ones we have to go that direction.
So, but but why do we have to? So, but, but why do we have to, because I'll, I'll somewhat disagree with you. I get complimented all the time about how nice downtown looks at Christmas time. I mean, you can't please everybody. Some, uh, people, some people are going to say, it looks great. Some people are going to say, it's tired and needs refreshed. I started my comments with, I'm not, I, I, I agree that, you know, we might need a refresh, but my, in my mind, the refresh is, let's, let's, let's refresh our garland and, and, and refresh our lights and make sure the lights are working and, because, okay, the pole on the right, where the library sign is, is, is well lit. The pole beyond it toward the bank, well lit. Across the street, however, in front of Mamoroma's hardly has any lights on it. So I, I'm just, you know, I, I don't, I don't think all of our garland and all of our lights work or are providing us the best that it, that they can. If we were to refresh that part, I think our Main Street would really look, I think you'd be surprised at how nice it would look with the refreshed garland.
Well, I'd like to hear what the rest of the council people have to say.
Did you say that a decision has to be made to get the discount by tomorrow?
Well, to get the thirty-five percent off. He get, he extended me three weeks, basically.
But you had to make the decision by tomorrow.
Well, he wants to hear from me tomorrow. Because tomorrow was his actual deadline for the thirty-five percent.
I would be curious to know how often through the year that, that do they do these discounts because...
Well, I do magazines and every one of them has a deadline on, to get, in the March.
Because we did, if, if you recall, we did this with the banners that are currently up right now. We just had to get it in because there was a discount to be had. I mean, I just wonder, when one discount ends, do they just renew another discount in a couple of weeks to drum up business once more?
Well, like I said, we're a committee. There were several people who come, who's interested in making some changes with the look downtown.
Does this be an anonymous choice?
People showed up, yes. Some was, yeah, yeah, because we, we took three different choices and, and we decided on, came to this conclusion because we don't want to look like, even Billington has the snowflakes. We don't want to look like, look like, we want something that somebody will want to come here to see and this would be different. This would be different.
Well, I've already spoken to all of the other people speak, but I'm not ready to make this kind of change, but...
I'm a good mixture of both. I'm also not ready to make a decision on it tonight. We obviously need to continue to refresh what we have in there if we're continuing to use that first and foremost. I love the opinion if we're spending the money to do that and go ahead and do it, we need to do these additions along with, uh, this refresh of the existing stuff that's on there. And if we end up replacing the, uh, the wreaths themselves with something new, um, I think that's a good idea if the price is reasonable as well.
Well, I understand we need to refresh what we have too, even, even if we use them on the side streets, you know, um, or even going down toward the college or, or our new section where we have new lights going out to Lickett Edition, there's nothing out that way, you know?
The poles are different, aren't they? Aren't they a light weight?
They can't, they can't hold as much as the ones down, the ones downtown are a lot harder.
We have to be careful with those.
But we could take those banners we use in town and you go out that direction. We couldn't go that direction.
The other thing we have to keep in mind, now, I know, I, this, this is, this is an inconsistent, I, and I try to be consistent, I realize what I'm about to say, but we also have to be mindful of the West Virginia Department of Highways. We've gotten away with what we do, but I mean, I, I can't override everything.
No, you, no, you can't, but I understand.
And I override what I can override, of what I feel like I can get away with. But, I mean, I, we've also, I've also been to the state Capitol and sat with Jimmy Riston and where, I mean, we are, we're on, are, are, we're already on a radar because of what we do here. So, I mean, we, we do have to be careful. Um, you know, we, we still put up the banners even though we're not supposed to because I, I see them everywhere else, so I, I, I put them, I say, okay.
And Weston has all those lights across their streets. In Weston, they're still allowing them to do that.
But that's Weston.
And we're asking, I mean, you, you can't treat the county differently all over.
But, but they do. It, it is one state code, but they do. Here's what they'll tell you. They'll say, because if you point out examples in Lewisburg and Charlestown and Beckley and everywhere else, they'll say, well, those are different districts and we, they shouldn't do it, but those districts allow it. Our district is a little more strict. I just, I, I, I disagree with it. I, I don't think it should, I don't think each district should, should have a say like that, but that's the, that's what we have to be mindful too because we don't want to get completely shut down of all of our decoratives.
So where should, where do we go from now, from here with our committee? Uh, just, where do we get from here?
Let me, let me say one thing. I, I don't like the fact that we're presented with this this evening and we have to decide, fifteen thousand dollars? I mean, I'm not prepared to make a decision on anything tonight. I mean, just because of that, I mean, alone. And, and, so are the other lights in the wreaths coming down off of the poles and it's going to be the poinsettias up or the lights staying up?
The poinsettias, we want the poinsettias there with the white lights going around the pole and use the, the wreath's other areas and, and the banners. I mean, hey, if you want to spend more money, that's fine, but the, as a committee, this is what we chose as a committee and that's why you have committees.
Right, but my, my contention is, it's presented tonight and you needed, you needed the answer tomorrow.
Well, I just thought maybe you transferred that committee that we've been discussing.
It's not like a five thousand dollar option, it's expensive.
I mean, it's not asking, we're not asking forty or fifty thousand dollars for other. I mean, I know the money's there in contingency money, I know it's there, but you're the council.
So our next committee meeting is April sixteenth, so perhaps we could get some guidelines about what city council would like to see and we can...
We say April sixteen?
Yes, at five-thirty here, um, and we can talk about this again and come up with some other ideas.
Is there any possibility that the individual would extend the deadline to three weeks?
He did. I'm, I'm not asking him again, he's done it twice.
I, I agree with Robbie, there, there's no deadline. I mean, they'll just keep sending, you can get this and...
Well, you might be right, you might be right.
That's the way they do it, yeah, so.
But, but...
He's just trying to get you to send him money. I mean, it's, it's only March, so I mean, I'm just, I'm not, I'm not against that idea, but I, I don't know what the other options are, I don't know what, I just want to see what else is...
Well, here's the thing, we have a committee and several others, the building's committee, and we like what we decided, but if it's going to come down to one or two people to say, no, we're not doing it, then we might as well not have a committee.
Pam, was it any other good ideas besides the, uh, the flowers and so forth?
Flowers?
Well...
Poinsettias.
Poinsettias.
Uh, yeah, but they were like twice the price.
Really?
Twice the price, yeah.
Would any of that were a little bit less?
No, no.
I like, um, I like the concept of poinsettias, I think, I think that'd look very attractive downtown.
I think it'd be beautiful.
But I, what would be involved? I'm just thinking of a pre-lit Christmas tree or trying to chase, burn out bulbs on my Christmas decorations to figure out which one of those little suckers is causing the problem. Is that what we would end up with on the garland?
You know, those, those things, uh, last for years. I mean, actually Jane Lee has our old decorations and they're still using them.
Um, you know, I'm just talking about refurbishing, how much...
But we'll have our next meeting, uh, what, April sixteenth?
Well, I think, I mean, the, the garland that we have is, it's, it is pre-lit. I mean, it, it is intertwined and it's the same as a Christmas tree and, yes, I mean, the, the Christmas tree has a, a section that goes out. You have, you either, you either spend hours cutting the lights out to just go to Walmart and buy more or you just go buy a whole new Christmas tree. So I, I mean, and, and we have sections of our garland on poles that will just have breaks where there's just no lights because the weather gets to them. They're old, we've had them for a while. Again, I don't disagree that we, that we could use some, a, a refresh downtown. I, I don't disagree with that, but I would remind the council and, and just for the public's knowledge, committees are committees. Committees are to refer and to recommend things to the city council and council has the final say over any committee, um, within the, within the city organization. I mean, even the Consolidated Public Works Board, which is designated as an enterprise board, has to refer items from time to time that require the council's oversight when it, when it comes to spending money. That board has to refer things to city council. These, these boards do not have autonomy to spend the cities, to spend city taxpayer money or to just act as their own independent entities. We just had a stock board meeting earlier this evening. There, there will be things coming up that will be referred to city council for, for its, uh, for its final say. That's just the way the organization is set up and we, that, we have to follow that, that process. I understand that the committee has met, but regardless of how much money it is, whether it be two thousand dollars or twenty-five thousand dollars, it is, it is council's final say over what, it, what happens with it. So I just want to make sure everybody understands that, that it's, this is the process that has to be followed.
I, I think the real challenge from my perspective, I, I think it would be a, a good change for us for the future, but we also still don't know about the power issue, uh, whether they can be done in an appropriate way. As you said, Robbie, the, deal with the extension cords and everything and everything, but I, I agree, it, it's good to occasionally refresh and, uh, you know, it's unfortunate that we don't have all the answers right this evening to make the decision that we get the thirty-five or dis, thirty-five percent discount tomorrow. So I, I wouldn't say we shouldn't do it, but this, can't make that decision right now. That, that would be my position. I think we need to still consider it and see whether alternatives we have.
The only thing I was going to ask is what the mayor said. Is that drawn, and I know it's not, can't be drawn to, or placed on there to spec. My concern would be the size of the poinsettias sticking out from the pole if a truck is in a turning lane. A box truck, is that going to hit? Is that out, going to be out to the curb or is it going to be out?
So we tried it with the wreaths this year and Jerry wasn't sold on it, but we tried it with the wreaths. Instead of haloing the wreaths around the lights, we stuck them out to the side the way the poinsettias are, are, that are designed there to, out over the street and everything was fine. But those wreaths are smaller in diameter than those poinsettias would be. I would, if I had to guess, the one that's probably most accurate is the one in front of Mamoroma's. That, I would say that's probably the most to-scale accurate placement.
Oh, and there's a, too, I just saw, I can't see that far away.
Do we know the dimensions, another four feet, five feet tall, that how?
Probably a four foot by four foot, aren't, if they're four foot tall, they should be four foot wide if they're perfectly...
That's what it said in the book was four feet, so I think you're right.
Because they look, they look pretty...
Actually, I think the poinsettia is going to be up higher, the bulk of it will be up higher, more where the light is than where those, uh, wreaths were. The wreath's actually set down and out underneath the light.
Yeah, I didn't even see the wreath before, so it's, the wreath comes out just as far as...
But we'll continue this conversation. We're going to have a meeting, anybody's invited on, on April sixteenth.
To be honest, I like the idea of the poinsettias, but I had those garlands, as you recall, when the governor's in, they were big, they were pre-lit and after about three years, four years, you know, they start running out, burning out. There's no way you could chase it down and so you'd run to Walmart and you'd wrap outdoor lights around it and those would last a couple of weeks, you know, and it was just a big old mess.
As, as beautiful as the, um, and I loved it and I, I helped...
Just connect to the meeting.
Face to mobile. I loved when we outlined the skyline in LED lights. I loved it and I dangled myself and several volunteers from those building rooftops helping to put those LED lights up. I thought that was the coolest thing. Um, but then twenty-twelve came and we hadn't had them up very long. I think they'd been up just maybe two years. Twenty-twelve came and we got hit with the derecho and then we got hit with Superstorm Sandy and that was the end of those. So not to say we make our decisions based on what weather, uh, traumatic weather events could take place, but that was a lot of effort and a lot of money and we had, we had two storms come through and they were ruined and we had to take them all down. So to Jack's point, these, when you, when you have these LED lights that are really, every one of them has to work and then the minute they start burning out, we have to replace the whole thing. It, it, you can't just get up there and, and, and fix one because you'll be, as, like you said, you'll be chasing them all season long and we don't have the manpower for that. I appreciate the committee's, uh, work so far. I have it on my calendar when, uh, when Teresa sent out the, um, the next, I think, three meetings, um, I, I put, I have them on my calendar. I plan to be at the April sixteenth one. I would encourage council members, if you're interested, to also be there or anyone from the public as well. But thank you, Amanda, thank you, Pam.
Yeah, Amanda.
Okay. Catherine, good evening, welcome, nice to see you. Okay, uh, do you have anything you want to bring up to the table? Nothing? Okay. Um, all right, um, let's keep going, um, and, and then we'll, we'll have an executive session here shortly, okay? All right, um, we have no other recognized guests at this moment. We'll bring, uh, our friends from Corehart and, uh, the Upstate County Development Authority up here soon. We now go to our building code enforcement officer, Ben Smith, who is with us this evening with a couple of line items that we need to, uh, consider. Hello, sir.
Hi, how are you?
We're well, how are you?
Great. All right, so in your packet, you'll see the ISO, uh, building code effectiveness grading schedule. I think it's all in your packet. We've got a commercial rating of five and residential rating of five. So if you look through that, all that scoring system, my thought was it's very subjective. Some give, we got all the credit, some we, we got a portion of it, some we got none. Uh, and I understand if we didn't meet that criteria, I understand why we didn't get any, but if we met the criteria, how do we only get a portion of what's, what's available? So that was a problem that I had with that and you guys can look over it and draw your own conclusions, but I guess five's not bad, it's middle of the road and if the insurance companies accept that, our residents can get a somewhat of a break on their insurance, on their homeowners. So that's the purpose of it.
It's very similar to the, um, to the fire rating, you know, we, so you look at that report and some things you're like, how did we not get more points for that? And some of it's like, hmm, they were generous and gave us some points where maybe we, you know, so...
I mean, so we're at our mercy, it was subjective. The year before, for some reason, I met with the gentleman and we went through the whole thing and some, he retired and then we got a message back and said, hey, you dropped out of this, the program. And I'm like, well, who, who did it? We, we checked in the office and none of us could figure out who told them we dropped out of the program. So I think, and, and Jay thought as well, that we, they dropped the ball themselves on the, on their end. They didn't want to take the fall, so they tried to blame it on us, but that's neither here nor there, so we're still at halfway. We're at five.
What's the last rating we had prior to miscommunications last year?
I think we were, we were like six at one time, six, six and a half, something.
Close, I mean...
Yeah.
Not a major shift.
No. No, and, and how that equates to savings for our residents, I couldn't tell you.
It's not a lot, but...
I would bet it wouldn't be, but every little bit helps. Any questions about that?
That's going to be my only question, what, what that difference was. We could quantify it.
It, it depends on your insurance company, it depends on the premium of the home, it depends on the value of the home, there's just a, it, we can't really quote that here.
So what's the remedy? So what's the remedy?
Well, one of the remedies in there is hire a code enforcement team, because they like to see more than one person.
Both of you, right?
Yeah.
I can't take any more than one of you.
Yeah, I was going to say.
Maybe we need six of them. But I don't know for our size community, I don't know how. We will work next year to see if we can increase it.
You said it well in the beginning, it's subjective.
What's the name of the company?
It's a rating system. It's a.
Verisk.
Verisk. Yeah.
But they don't want to admit that they were the ones that.
Verisk or something. Verisk, something. Yeah. But that's what, I think it's the same company that does the fire rating.
Well, what did the person that retired say? Did you have a chance?
She's on the program. Oh, wait. Is she? Oh, okay. Sorry. I just wanted to make sure that we got everybody. So we made eye contact, and I'm like, I want to make sure we got her. Sorry.
In a moment?
I know. She's a squirrel. Yes, you can.
All right, so the next thing, moving on, we've got a application or a request for a zoning change. And I think you all have maps in your folder. Do you see the one that says proposed?
It's right after this report.
Yeah. And you see the one that's existing? You see them?
Mm-hmm.
All right, so behind the Church of Christ is where this would start. And what this would do would be encompass the parking lot.
The Mormon church. Church of Christ is down here. The Mormon church.
Okay. All right. One of those churches. All right. So the church, the parking lot comes back in, probably a little bit further than C2 would have allowed. All right, so in doing this, at that request, I thought, well, while we're doing it, let's correct this problem here and help everybody out down Canal to save a lot. So behind the church, it would increase from 250. There's a 250-foot setback that is C2 from Canal Street. So 250 foot back from Canal Street. Behind the church and this piece of property that John Sandy and his wife have that are requesting the change, it would change, instead of 250, would change it, add another 215 feet to that. So you're looking at about 465 feet behind those two pieces of property. Advanced Auto and the church. Okay? And then Casey Earle's, Scott Randall's property. Okay? Or somebody's.
Preston. Scott Preston.
Or Scott, you're right. I'm looking at you.
They had a moment.
Yeah. All right, so it would increase it 215 feet there, on down behind Jody Light's property, the Jenkins property, and Craig Phillips' property to save a lot, it would increase at 121 feet. And the reason we did that was in Jody Light's development, or Delmer Light's development, in Morning Drive, we have a definite breakup of C2 and R1. What we have now, it's real, it's subjective as well. It's about 250 feet, so it's like, all right, where does it stop? This way, we would have a definite line where the property started, or where the C2 stopped. Okay? We know it starts at Canal where it stopped at the end of it. So that's a request that we were asking to be, to put in front of you guys to see if you have the stomach for it, if you want to pass it on, what do we want to do? And I've spoken with the lights. I spoke with Craig Phillips. He's on board. I think Tom spoke with someone at the church. So we were kind of on board with it.
Well, I mean, I, I mean, when there was an official notice, I mean, I can forward that on to get an official kind of response, but there wasn't any real kind of strong feeling going one way or the other. I mean, the thing is that this has to go to the Planning Commission right before it comes back to council.
Yeah, I was going to remind, since we've got some new folks on council, I was going to kind of go over the process here. So it comes to City Council first. This is a little process. Comes to City Council first, then council, if it's in its will and pleasure this evening, would refer it to the Planning Commission. Planning Commission would then consider it and have to hold a public hearing regarding it. If the Planning Commission is, if the Planning Commission agrees that the zone should be changed, they would then refer it back to City Council.
Well, they would back either way with either a recommendation and then it be adopted or not.
Right.
And then the council.
Council will take action from there. Yeah.
And in that process, what we will do on our zoning application, on the request for a zoning change, we will notify all the surrounding owners of that property via certified mail. So we have all that. They have the opportunity to come to the Planning Commission to voice their yays or nays.
Well, I've had some conversations with Ben about this, and I know with the mayor as well. What I like about it is that there was, it wasn't one of these situations where somebody had to do something, we said, no, can't do it. You guys explored it. You talked to some of the neighboring properties already. We'll put it to the test, whatever we have in front of the Planning Commission. We have a public meeting and so forth. But I think it's a positive thing for the community, is the point. And you did your research. You went out and you asked the questions and so forth. And I love the fact that we can do something positive instead of just putting a stop sign up real fast, saying, no, we can't do that with zoning here or there or whatever. So that's what I like about it. I mean, I'll definitely want to see it go to the Planning Commission. I'll make the motion when the time is right.
I know how business works. I used to be a businessman, so if we can bring business in, I think that's a great thing.
Yeah.
And that would be a prime piece of property there on Canal for the lights to expand that.
Is there a reason why you're not including the area from Leonard Street to Rigger?
Well, I did not talk to anyone down there. That's residential right there. There are houses there. I did not want to include houses in that change.
That isn't allowing insurance in that?
But he's covered in the 250 feet.
Yeah. What you got to be careful in there is the houses on Leonard and Rigger get really close together, and there's not really much of a buffer. And so you don't want to have commercial just in the backyard of residents. So that's why, that was the philosophy as to why it stopped there. But what we're taking in from Leonard northward is, it's already all really a business.
Well, and it's undeveloped property at this point.
I see this as a benefit to the property owners and the potential for commercial locations, and I'm all for it.
I'm all for it as well. I just wanted to be clear, 12 at 180 up through 186 there on the map, that's, those owners, you're saying, are apprised to the situation already?
Absolutely.
Yes, I'm all for that.
I did that first thing before I ever started drawing and playing and coming up with some lines and.
He wasn't allowed to get his crayons out until he asked permission first, so.
And then Jay broke open the CAD, so we got it done from there.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Okay, so once again, the action tonight would be for the City Council to refer this matter to the Planning Commission for its consideration and to hold a public hearing. Randy has made that motion. Is there a second to that motion? Jack, I think you, is there any further discussion? Hearing the need for none, I will call for that question. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Like son opposed? Motion carries.
All right, I've got one last thing real quick. In 2016, we drew up an ordinance, April 7th of 2016, that addressed our building fees. That's coming up on nine years old. And at the time we did that, I don't know, there was a couple of the councilmen on here, but what was proposed was cut in half nine years ago. I want to know, should we make a recommendation to revisit that? Let's see, we're nine years old on the same fee schedule that was cut in half nine years ago. So I think we're losing revenue.
I don't want to go into the weeds on this this evening, but I think this is a matter that could be referred to the Revenue and Expense Review Committee, of which I would invite you, we'll try to have it on the day that you're here. But I would like for that group to analyze this a little bit and bring back a recommendation to the City Council if that's the, if it's the will and pleasure of that working group.
Absolutely.
And then we can have that discussion at the City Council level once a recommendation has been provided.
You don't need a motion for that.
No, no.
All right, any questions?
That should be done.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ben.
Before we get to Ambie's report this evening, I do want to recognize a gentleman in the room this evening who is no stranger to any of us. Strawberry Festival has had to pivot very quickly and have a change in its top leadership. And I am really pleased and thankful to this guy here for stepping up once again and leading the festival. The festival has really improved a great deal in its quality over the past few years, and he has had a lot to do with that and his leadership abilities with the board. He is dedicated to this community, which is, as we all know, is rare for to have somebody who's under 35, who is dedicated the way that he is. But Shane, thank you for, once again, stepping up to lead the Strawberry Festival in this, with just two months, less than two months now to go. Two months from tonight, it will be over. So thank you for agreeing to do it, and I'm looking forward to this event this year. I know a lot of us are. We've got, we've announced our headliner, of which you had a lot to do with bringing here to Buckhannon. I think that's going to be a big crowd draw for downtown. So we're working hard as a board to make this festival continue to be one of the best that the community has seen. I think last year will be tough to top, but I'm sure we can do it. So is there anything you want to say this evening to the council, given your new slash old slash renewed position as president of the Strawberry Festival?
Just, I'm here again.
Welcome back.
And just thank you for the kind words, and thank you to all of you for your support.
Shane.
It's Easton Corbin. He's a country singer. He's had a couple number ones. He's just popular and really popular in early 2010s, but he's starting to make a little bit of a comeback, and people are excited for sure.
How long are you on board for? Just this year, two years?
My actual term on the board itself lasts until 2026. My term as president will end in June when we have the next elections. Interim president, whatever you want to call it.
Andrew.
So we're in the position right now.
Thanks for your time and everything.
Thank you.
Shane is, of course, one of our full-time city firefighters and newly married guy himself, so I know a little bit about the, if you take on one more thing, the ultimatums come. But thank you to you and Sarah for leading the festival.
We had that conversation.
I'm sure you have.
My thoughts would say we're good for now.
Again, I know all about it. Take on one more thing. All right. So that leads us into Ambie's report. We've got the financial report, and then underneath here, while Ambie's coming up, we've got the recommendations from the Revenue and Expense Review Committee to outside entities. The council has already approved the budget, which we did at our last budget session. So just for the public's, which these were included, just for the public's knowledge, I'll read through these quickly. West Virginia Strawberry Festival Association, $25,000 contribution. Almost Heaven Barbecue Bash, $10,000 contribution. Create Buckhannon for the Season of Festival Fridays, $10,000 contribution. The Upstate Buckhannon Health Department, a $5,000 contribution. Country Roads Transit, a $15,000 contribution. And the Upstate County Development Authority, a $55,000 contribution. That is all coming from General Fund, and all of those were included in the budget, the greater budget that we, as a collective body unanimously passed earlier this week. So, Ambie, it's now your time to talk about what money we have left.
Okay, so I'll give you your balances for your enterprise funds. I've given the General Fund balances in the first part of the month. For February, Waste Collection Money Market was $1,700,000, and they have a CD at 322 and a letter of credit for $64,000. The Water Board Money Market and Checking, $1,022,000, and the working capital rule and savings are at $912,000. Then we have sanitary board, $957,000. We see these at 476, and the stormwater funds at $221,000. We just finished up the field portion of our financial state audit that's required every year. Those completed on Friday, so we should expect to have our final audit report by the end of next week. And your bills to be approved, ones I'll point out to you, are $4,395 to RD Energy for concrete for sidewalks on Island Avenue, $4,838 to Argos USA for bulk cement for various projects, $15,000 to Rustler Sales for the fence panels. Those are the fence panels we talked about that we got at like a really bargain price, that are really nice black wrought iron, used in places throughout the city. $3,599 DSN Sports for the bleachers and the Stalker Gymnasium. That's the portion of the finance report with the bills. I don't know if you want me to just pile through these or?
Let's, I'll undertake a motion first that we approve the payment of our bills. Motion by Thomas, a second by Randall. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If some opposed, motion carries. Okay, Ambie.
And like the mayor mentioned, the budget for the fiscal year 2526 was approved on the 18th for the General Fund and Cold Tax. Now, of course, we have all the other budgets to work on, but there's no deadline on that other than we have to get it done by June. Those are the waste, sanitary, consolidated, and water budgets. But in the General Fund budget, council already knows what's in it, so this is more for the community and what they may or may not have already read in the newspaper. The budget that was approved is $6,862,382. I'm just going to give you the bird's eye overall view of it. I have a chart here that kind of lists how the percentages of the budgets went to different departments. So of course, number one, public safety, that's your police and fire and public safety. $3,170,000 take up 46% of the budget, almost half. Streets take up 26.8. That's for street, streetlights, signs, signals, snow removal, and street projects. And then number three on the list is the youth center, that's $574,000. So those percentages go down through there. Our admin area is at, our admin area is at $455,000, and that would be the mayor's office. and that would be the mayor's office, council, recorder, treasurer, judge, attorney, engineer, dues, data processing, and city hall. That's all under that one area of admin. The new items that were added to the budget, of course, was pay increases for the employees. But as far as other items, we have in street projects, $165,000. Paving, $200,000. Street partner asked for a mini excavator. They tried to share some of that equipment, but that piece of equipment is in high demand throughout the departments. When everyone needs it, it can't be borrowed. So, council approved the purchase of that, financing it. It's about a $75,000 piece of equipment. They also contributed $100,000 to the Consolidated Public Works Board, which helps pay for parks and cemetery mowing, and that's the basis of what that project is. Fire department, truck refurbish needs to be done. It's a $400,000 cost, so we're going to finance that and make payments to refresh that truck. We're already paying for some air packs, a fire chief's truck, and a pumper truck. Police department, new is ballistic vests will be replaced, and tasers will be replaced. I think that's about it for the overall view of it. You all know everything, went line by line, I have them with it three times, you looked at it. So, I think they made some tough decisions. I might mention too, we just had the table there for contribution temporarily. We just had some questions, so we'll review that again, and then that will come back. We can't review, we can't change this budget now until July, and we'll have to do a revision then. You'll lay the levy for these taxes on April 15th. That's mandatory throughout the state.
Just for clarification sake, though, the $20,000 to the airport that was allocated previous years, we kept that the same this year.
Yes.
If there's additional monies to be allocated to the airport, well, we're waiting on the additional information to come back, and after, and after our budget revision in July, we may or may not be looking to allocate additional monies to the airport.
That's exactly right.
Right, okay. All right, is there any questions for Ambie? As she accurately put it, council has reviewed this several times, so. Ambie, thank you, and Barb, for all of your work on preparing the budget, and listening to us, and categorizing our wishes and wants and requests, and I appreciate, and I know all of us do, all the work that you put into getting the budget done for us, so.
Hard job. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, up next is our public works director, Mr. Ethan Crosten.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Hi, Ethan.
So, the street department said a busy month. We are ready for the final platform on Jollibee Park stage. We have that scheduled for next Wednesday. Then all that will be left is railing and stairs and minor cosmetic fixes to it. We complete about 50% of the Island Avenue project. We pulled off of it a little bit to get the park done during the, or the city park done during the nicer weather in South Florida Street, in preparations for paving. And at the city park, we have added a little bit wider burn around the pickleball courts, added crusher and stone, compacted it in order to roll it. I believe that will help expand some of the playing area on it. Finished up all the dirtwork around the pickleball court, basketball court, and have been taking the overhead power lines, burying them, meeting with Mont Power tomorrow to get that taken care of, and running conduits throughout the park to get the verkata cameras installed, so. It's been a mess this week, but I think it's, if you have time to drive by, it's starting to look better. It's even mulched as of today.
I was in there this evening. It, it's, it's taken, it's taken shape.
Yeah, it's much better than Monday, so. And then the other project mentioned is South Canola Street. That is in preparation for the paving this spring. We replaced the sewer line under, sanitary department's been in there this week, and after they're out next week, hopefully we will get started on reboarding sidewalks. Waste department, we're continuing to work on some issues with our new trucks, and our facility department was extended again till July 21st of this year. Steward department, we finally got our bull gear installed for clarifiers. Been out of service since August, so we were happy to get that up and running again. Did small stormwater project again for paving on Upper Drive this spring, and been assisting the South Canola Street and the CMH development on Vicksburg Road moving along. Water department is currently working on a six-inch water main extension in Tenerton near the new car wash, and Tom Davis recently passed his class four operator's exam, so. Like to mention him. The engineering report, the FEMA generator mitigation projects are in the closeout stages. The contractor for green number one is set to begin installation of the punch list items this week. Harbor projects, again, continuing to work on the punch list on that project. The Charles Gibson Library project, there is a meeting on March 12th with the mills group to discuss options for the library renovations or additions. And for the DOH tap program on Morton Avenue, we've ran into some issues with property owners, and trying to get some property to complete that project that we're working through. So, all the design activities and surveying services on that project has been paused for a time. And I believe that all I have.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Ethan relative to his public works report? Doesn't sound like it. Thanks, Ethan. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, city police report, Mr. Gregory, or Chief Gregory.
Good evening. Just a few things to report under the police department's activities. Really a couple things that have just, were mainly involved in. As we saw tonight with Officer Major and his entourage, and the schedule order tonight, we're happy to have him back. We have him starting on the schedule next Tuesday. He will return to regular duties as a patrol officer, and that's really beneficial with his returning. He is, continues with his West Virginia certification. So, no, no new steps are required. His certification has been reactivated, and he's ready to hit the ground on day one. The other employee that we're, continue to work on, on boarding, Cole Bender. We have a tentative date for him to start on Monday, March 31st at 8:00 a.m., where his swearing-in ceremony will occur at the public safety complex. So, we'll be happy to get him on board as well.
What time is that?
At 8:00 a.m., yeah, Monday, March 31st.
Got to get up early for that one.
Yeah. So, that will bring us back to full strength. The only thing keeping us from being 100% staff on the road is the graduation of Chris Butler, our officer, who is currently at the West Virginia State Police Academy. He is about two-thirds of the way through. He is scheduled to graduate on May 2nd, at which point he'll return back to us, continue with his field training, which will take him into summer. Once he completes field training, will be 100% on, back to, back to full staff. The other thing that we're working on, continue to work on, is preparation for our onsite assessment with Kalia. I've met a number of times telephonically with our Kalia assessor, a gentleman by the name of Jason Casalea. A longtime member of Kalia, I've been an assessor for many years with the organization. Chief Casalea is a chief of police with a town called Manlius, which is a suburb of Syracuse. He's also, in his career, served as the undersheriff of the Onondaga Sheriff's Department, which is the county that encompasses Syracuse with a population of about a half million. So, he's bringing a lot of experience to begin. I look forward to networking with him and learning as much as we can from him as we continue to professionally develop our department. So, he is set actually to be here the same day that we swear in our new officer, on Monday, March 31st, and his assessment will encompass about half of that week. He's set to be here through Wednesday, April 2nd. His assessment will encompass not only onsite reviews, but also a number of interviews with our staff, community members as well, looking at primarily outcomes as it relates to our operations and our activities with the community. We're looking forward to that. We're looking forward, again, to the feedback, to the networking that we'll take from this and grow as an organization. Mayor, that's all I have under my regular report. I have a few things under the, under the police department line as we move forward as well.
Okay. Any questions for Chief Gregory regarding his regular report? Okay, proceed.
The next thing on the agenda is consideration of an agreement with a company by the name of Hometown Publishing. Hometown Publishing produces a calendar, which is something that the police department has had, beyond my experience with the city, I've always known a calendar here. And the way it's worked, we've, we've interacted with different companies over the years. The way it works is the, the publishing company will come to town, and will solicit advertisements from local businesses. They'll buy an ad on the calendar, and in turn, the company is able to provide us with, with calendars that have pictures of the police officers. We've recently included pictures of our VIPs members as well. And again, it includes the names and the advertisements of the businesses who have partnered with the company. Those, those calendars are distributed to not only the sponsors, but also, we make those available to the public through both the police department, and they're very well received by the public here at city hall. When we get to December time, I'm always asked, "Do you have your calendars yet? Do you have your calendar?" because they have customers that come here that, that look for those each year. So, currently, the company that we use, and have used for a few years now, its, its name escapes the top of my head, but it's a company based out of Kentucky. And like I said, we've partnered with them. No, no complaints with them. However, Hometown Publishing came along, and they have provided calendars for a number of agencies in this region, so they've really kind of made a footprint in this part of West Virginia, whereas the company that we've dealt with in Kentucky really does not. Hometown Publishing also offers more. So, in addition to receiving the calendars from whatever publishing company, this is the way it's worked from one company to another. The current company that we work with out of Kentucky offers us 250 calendars, plus $500 for the police budget, plus a framed picture of the calendar itself. Hometown Publishing is offering 250 calendars, $500 upfront, plus $1,500 more dollars on the, on the backend of producing the calendars, plus 100 challenge coins, plus an image of the calendar as well. So, they, they were just offering more, and I thought it was another, a better opportunity to explore for the police department.
Where is Hometown Publishing located?
So, he is, the, the publishing actually takes place in Louisiana. The gentleman that I dealt with is from Western Virginia, but he's actually from Virginia originally, so that's where he kind of gained a footprint with.
Now, you know what my next question's going to be. You already know what it's going to be. Can anybody here do this? Can, can the sign guy, can Eric Fluke, can?
He goes, "So, yeah."
Can, well, I know that, but I mean, is that something that they would be interested in doing? I just, I mean, we've got a lot of those kind of businesses in this town.
Yeah.
And sometimes we get our, you know, for not, when these kind of things come up, that we don't give them an opportunity to, to do these kinds of projects. Is it something, do we know that they would even be interested in doing, or could, do they have the capacity of doing, or is it even cost-effective of doing?
Yeah, I, I don't know that I could answer that. I've never been privy to that information from local companies. They've never approached us with that, and like I said, we've.
And they may not be.
We produce the calendar, I've been with the city for over 28 years, and we produce a calendar on everyone who hears from other companies from beyond this area to do it. Now, that, that's their specialty. They, they focus exclusively on selling ads to businesses and producing calendars for mainly public safety agencies, mainly police departments, some fire departments also do it as well.
Do you sell the calendars?
We do not sell them. We provide them free at children's.
And what do you have to pay the company to produce the calendar?
Nothing.
Nothing?
No. They pay, they pay.
They get their revenue from the ads that they sell?
Yeah. Just, I, I hear what you're saying, but I think these are, this is one of those specialty items. Yes. That it'd be worth asking, or you're around. I don't know that the publishing companies think, well, we really, the only publishing company we may have would be Ralston.
Yeah.
I'll tell you what, the others would have to send it out.
Probably.
Probably, a company like this.
Probably. And they'd have a lot of setup fees, because they don't have the template already created. I, I, I get it. I, I just, I, I feel like I have to ask, because we, we are a community that is very heavy in the graphic design business sector. We've got a lot of them here, and so, does, every time we put a new banner up, every time we do something, I get, will, will did, you know, did you, I didn't, I didn't get a phone call on that. So, I just wanted, I just wanted to see if it's something that we, if you thought we should explore, or if you're, if you think this company is going to be the best bang for the buck.
Yeah, I, I think this company would be fine. Like I said, I don't know any local companies that do it, and especially since we produce a calendar for year after year after year. We, we readily provide those to the community. We hand them out here at city hall, police department, all the sponsors get copies of them. So, it's, it's well-known we have a calendar in the community, and I've not heard any, personally, any local feedback in terms of just switching. I mean, certainly if there was, I'd be happy to entertain it, but I just, I don't know if any, if it's even possible.
Have they shared a list of their customers with?
They did. I know one, one of the customers with Hometown Publishing is the Upstate County Sheriff's Department. They also work with the Elkins Police Department as well, so locally, they, they were shared down with me.
That's true, yeah. That, he makes a good point. I mean, you know, there's a sheriff's deputy up there that is brother-in-law's with a, with a printer, so if, if, if they're doing the sheriff's departments, then there's, it's probably not something that can be done here, so that's a good point.
I, I had a struggle to bring some publications that I did in my prior business. And I perfectly did it here because of my position on city council, but it had to be sent out of town to be published. So, I had to pay more, which I did, because it couldn't be, it just couldn't be printed here. But I just, I just doubled it up, just so I could, you know. Again, because I felt I owed that, but, but it cost more money, and it was a little bit out of their comfort zone to do that, but, you know, we put it together. So, I, I think, something we could explore, but I think this is a specialty business, and, and the local folks would have to put together a sales team to make the calls, to make the sales, so on and so.
Yeah, so, well, since, since what he said, I mean, I know, since you said the sheriff's department does this company, and what he, you know, I, I would, I would say that this is, this is the, this is the game here, so. I, I, I think it seems reasonable. I, I'd entertain a motion that we approve the Hometown Publishing opportunity for our calendars.
Assume moved.
Motion by Scott, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Rob. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Some opposed, and motion carries.
And thank you very much for that. Mayor, the other thing on the, the agenda is, I'd asked Erica Bennett, our peer liaison, to come back tonight to give another semi-annual update. As you recall, she was before council back in the fall, primarily to introduce herself at the time, but to also discuss her role as a peer liaison and talk about some of the activities that she was involved in. This is just furtherance of the efforts of just continuing just the transparency into this program, informing council what she does, what, what's been going on these past few months since she was last here, and in turn, informing the community what her role is. This past Monday, March 17th, actually marked the one-year anniversary that Erica's been with us. And as I said before, her primary goal, and hopefully you'll see that in her report tonight, whereas she focuses on not only substance use disorder, homelessness, but also behavior issues. And through that, her primary goal is to get folks off the streets who are struggling with these issues into treatment, what are the resources they may need, and. with these issues into treatment, what are the resources they may need, and backed into productive and healthy lifestyles. And so her goal is, Mayor's our goal in trying to enhance the quality of life for our citizens here in McKinnon. So Mayor, without further ado, if I could turn the floor over to Erica Bennett to report on her activities.
I've got her written down right here.
Thank you.
She's on the list.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hello, please.
First and foremost, I want to thank y'all for the confidence in me for the vehicle use. I put a little spreadsheet in here for the last six months. You can see that the miles add up, and that I'm very busy most of the time. So thank you very much for that. It's much appreciated. The wear and tear on my vehicle, thanks you too. So just since the last time we met, I wrote down, I've gotten a total of 20 people off of the streets. I'm marking out the 21, because I took someone to treatment Monday, and that wasn't included in this report. This is kind of a recap of things that I've done and things that I do since we last spoke. I did go through the 40-hour CIT training. If you're not familiar with CIT, it's a crisis intervention team. It's basically for law enforcement first responders, people embedded with law enforcement first responders. It's a, it's a team of folks that come together on basically social issue calls, and find out better ways of treating these folks instead of trying to wrestle our way out of it. So I did do that 40-hour training in January. I also have another upcoming training with a couple other folks in the community here and in Lewis County. And we are going to go through some training to start going into middle schools, to talk with middle school-aged children about, not just prevention, but provided education on addiction awareness. So when they see it, like with their friends, with their family, their parents, their siblings, just give them some awareness things to look for, symptoms and signs. We're going to start with middle school-aged children. We don't want to go younger than that. The comprehension isn't really there yet, but middle school, I remember me in middle school, I saw it. You know what I mean? If you think back on those, on those days. I was out the first week of March with the flu. Since I've been back, the last two weeks, I've gotten 16 referrals. And I might have a seventh tomorrow. We'll see when tomorrow comes. I have a list of a little bit of local resources that I work with daily, weekly, monthly, a lot of them daily. So Parish House is a big one, obviously. Feed My Sheep on the corner of Russian Court and Stony Run. The Upshur County Homeless and Housing Coalition, Mountain Cap. I do go to the, it's the task force meeting in Randolph County. It is the homelessness and addiction task force, not just to provide my resources through my company, but to gain the resources of companies that come there, like Western News Over Living, Catholic Charities, just local resources. The FRN in Weston, the Family Resource Network, I actually went and set up there, what day? Was it yesterday?
Yeah.
I don't know what day it is right now. Yesterday, we have the peer at the Weston Police Department that started in December, and she utilizes the FRN in Weston a lot, and she's kind of new. And she was setting up a booth to hand out Narcan off the resources, and she asked if I'd help her. So I spent the day down there with her. Family Support Center here, St. Joe's calls me for referrals quite frequently. Western News Over Living, Community Care Connections on Kanala, they call me with referrals quite frequently. The peers embedded at Community Care don't have the freedom and the options to take people to treatment, and you strike them the iron hot in situations like that. Our House, the local recovery homes here in Upshur County, we collaborate a lot. I don't want to go through this list and give you a rundown of everything, because I think she said we included it, and I know everybody can read. As you can see, February was a very busy month, and it was the worst month due to weather. Burning up the streets a little bit in the month of February, not so great roads. It's fine. It's fine. People got where they needed to be, and I got back safely. I don't really like to talk about myself. If you guys have any questions, concerns, comments, complaints.
I think you're doing a wonderful job.
Thank you.
And 20 people is significant. So congratulations to you. Thank you for your work. And Chief Gregory, thank you for bringing this to us. And, you know, this still remains a pilot, I believe, program, and so I think we all collectively can say we're pleased and it's working well here. I saw, I saw a comment today, I've always been very good friends with the mayor of the city of Huntington, and Steve's no longer mayor there because they have term limits for the mayorship in Huntington. There's a new administration there, it's taking a little bit different approach, but there was a comment today that said, cities that have more law enforcement officers do not have less crime or less, you know, disturbances and bad things happening. Cities with more resources can make a dent in that kind of activity. And we are, I believe, a city that has invested in resources to make sure that we are attacking our issues from a thought-provoking, from a holistic approach, and not just, well, it's a problem, arrest it and get, and get it gone. So thank you for, it's tedious work, and the public has no idea what you go through every day, and so it takes a special person to do it, and we really appreciate you.
Yeah, and I really enjoy doing it. I mean, somebody did it for me.
I have a question, Lisa.
Sure.
What's the common denominator or thread that you see with these individuals, like the 20 that you've dealt with in the last six months or so, that has put them in this kind of, that you have to go in there to help them out? Is it parenting, or lack of parenting, or what causes a lot of this stuff?
So there's not like one common denominator. There's a lot of trauma linked with, it becomes a coping mechanism. Like people with substance use or mental health, it becomes a coping mechanism to deal with trauma that they've dealt with, either in their childhood, in their teen years, or even in adulthood. You know, I, I have a man that called me quite frequently. He's 60 years old, and his family has nothing to do with him, and he has his own issues, and he just calls me to have someone to talk to, and says, and cries, and then we end up laughing before we get him a phone call, because I don't want the phone call to end the same way that it started. Never met him in person. He just got my phone number randomly from somebody in the community. And we usually talk once or twice a week, and just little bits and pieces. And I always throw out 988 when people call me with like suicidal ideas or things like that. But when you build trust with somebody, like I have a lot of, I have a lot of repeat ones, which I didn't include in this number because it would be much higher. But just, just things, I mean, that's why we're going and start, going into middle schools. It's like 65 or 70% plus of middle school-aged children being raised by someone who is not their biological parents, and that to me is outrageous. So that's a lot of it. And a lot of it is, you know, even when I was younger, things that were happening in my house, we didn't talk about outside the house. You dealt with it inside the house, and kept your mouth shut when talking to other people. Therapy wasn't a huge option. Recovery for substance use wasn't a huge option. So just the awareness that is, is around and becoming more resourceful, like the mayor was said, the resources in the community that we have. And if we don't have it here, you can see on the paper, I take on where the resources that they need are. But a lot of it is, started with trauma. That's one of the biggest underlying issues.
But you work with people sometimes that you never even have met personally?
Oh, yeah.
That's interesting.
Yeah, I mean, and I had someone ask me the other day, like, has anyone ever tried to get like physically or verbally aggressive with you? I'm like, no, okay, I'm just trying to help them. And if I offer them help and they don't want it, I'll say, okay, I'll leave them my card, and I'll go check on them again in like a week or so. I'm not going to stop trying.
We appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Thank you.
Have a good day, Lisa.
And if there's anything that you need from us, or if there's a way that we can help, or there's a resource that you feel that is, could help further, please communicate with Chief Gregory, and don't, don't be afraid to come and have a conversation.
I appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay. New business discussions, I want to ask for the building and wiring permits real quick, and then we need to go into an executive session. Is there a motion to approve the building and wiring permits that were presented to you via email?
Still moved.
Motion by Rob, a second by Scott, or was it you?
Yeah.
Randy, Scott, noting Mr. Ringer's extension. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If some opposed, that motion carries. Okay. We need to exit into a executive session relative to property matters, of which I will ask everyone to leave the room except for Alvin, and Brandon, and Tammy. I would like to have them stay for the executive session, and then we'll reconvene once that time is over with, okay? I would like to have them stay for the executive session and then we'll reconvene once that time is over with, okay?
We're back in session now. Rodney, we're back in session?
Yes. Okay. At 9:04, I entertain a motion that we return from executive session of where we discussed a property matter pursuant to state code.
So move.
Motion by Thomas, second by Sanders. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Like sign opposed, that motion carries. Let the minutes reflect that we are back in a regular session, of which we are ready to take action on a line item, which would be line item B on the agenda under new business. We just discussed a property matter, as I just mentioned, that is allowable by state code. I would entertain a motion that, subject to a completed application, including but not limited to financials and a full business plan, that we grant parent company St. Gobain the opportunity to enact ordinance 393, which is our home rule ordinance, specific to an enterprise zone, that we grant five years of BNO tax exemption at the level of 100%. Additionally, that we grant five years of the portion of the tax, property tax that is paid to the city, that five years of that be rebated for a potential development located within city limits near the Upsher County Readiness Center located off Brushy Fork Road.
So move.
Second.
All right, there is a motion by Mr. Thomas, there is a second by Mr. Sanders. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Hearing the need for none, I will call for that question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Like sign opposed, that motion carries unanimously. We will be in, we'll be in communication about the next steps as to what the application looks like, okay? All right, thank you all very much, and thank you for indulging us through this long. I wanted the room to kind of, I didn't want to have to send everybody out, I didn't know where we were going to put them, so it's just the media, they're, they're, they're used to it.
It's not just, it's the media.
The, the. Lastly, on the new business line item, I'd ask for you to approve an appointment to the Upsher Buchanan Board of Health, Dr. Teresa Black, taking Nurse Susie Combs's position on that board. Is there a motion to that effect?
No.
Motion by Jack, second by Scott, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Like sign opposed, that motion carries. Down to the reports of events, correspondence and information, you have the notice of the cemetery annual cleaning, spring cleanup, which is March 24th through March 28th, request for proposal of vehicle for third-party towing and storage services. This was brought up a couple of meetings ago relative to the special events that we have downtown. That's in your packet for review. It was passed unanimously. The Colonial Arts Center and the CAC Gallery present the 2025 Upsher County Youth Art Exhibition. I'm talking too much tonight. A city hall will be closed at 12:30 PM on Monday, March 24th, 2025, for a city employee appreciation afternoon. We appreciate every, everything that everyone has done this winter, it's been a tough one, and so the city council is going to present the city employees with a fun afternoon. We're providing them lunch at the convention center, so we even got Ambi to close city hall, can't believe that that happened. So please make your plans accordingly, we will not be open at 12, around 12:30 on Monday, March 24th, 2025. Upcoming events at the event center of Brushy Fork, we've got the Central West Virginia Aging Services Homemakers Training, that was this morning, Randy was out there, and he was, I think they had a good, good event turnout for that. We've also got the Central West Virginia Friends of the NRA Elimination Dinner on March 22nd, that is this weekend. We have the April, on April 12th, 2025, the Seth Project Gala, April 19th, 2025, the Upsher County Shrine Club Elimination Dinner, and April 26th, Buchanan Upsher High School Prom. Okay, we're down to council comments and announcements, I'll begin over here with Mr. Randall to the left.
Just a lot of thank yous. First and foremost, Erica Bennett, that's my first meeting and hearing from her, I was very, very impressed. Timing is key when dealing with addiction, and she seems like she's been there, and she knows a lot of great ways to help and get access to resources for folks. Looking forward to the barbecue and fish fry, I appreciate our continuing events over the summer, and appreciate Shane's taking over for the strawberry festival. I'm very interested in looking forward to some point setias, as well as maybe refurbishing what we have as well, looking forward to talking more on that. City park is looking good as well. I have noticed, I use it at least three or four times a week, and it seems like it's exponentially more and more people every time I go, so thank you to Ethan. That's it for me.
Thanks Scott. Pam?
I'm really glad that we can help out St. Gobain, and that will be a big plus for the whole community, and hopefully bring more businesses, and that'll be a start to get that going out there, and thank you, Brandon. Also, saw today that Community Care is having a bus come to town on April the 11th, and it's for a lung screening, and it's for anybody that is a smoker or a past smoker, and you can probably get that done for free, all you have to do is call to Community Care to set up an appointment, and it's on April 11th. And also, I want to thank my committee for the downtown decor, and we will be meeting again on April 16th at 5:30 here, and I appreciate anybody that'd like to come get involved.
Was that any again, Pam?
April 16th at 5:30.
Thank you, Pam. Jack?
I want to say thank you to the decoration committee and their efforts. It's a sacrifice on their part to give their time and ostillate ideas for what we may do downtown, it needs to be recognized, and our, the young lady that presented, I forget her name.
Erica.
Erica, yeah, I'm sorry. Old timers disease, I guess. Erica's done a tremendous job, and she's proven to be an asset, so hats off to her, and that's about all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Thomas?
Well, I endorse what everybody said, I, I know Erica's got a very, very tough job, and I appreciate what she has dedicated herself to do that. I appreciate Dylan Major coming back, and that he'll be back on duty this coming Tuesday, that's fantastic, and I appreciate Pam and the decorating committee. I, I personally like, I think the point set is going to be a great idea, I hope we can move in that direction for the future, and I just appreciate everybody, we, I think we had a nice meeting tonight, and wish you well to everybody, and have a great weekend.
Thanks, Thomas. Mr. Zolls?
Just, oh, one thing. Actually, three people approached me with the beautiful weather, we had the warm weather this week, past week.
Did we get credit for that?
Yeah, we did. I gave it to you. A couple people, they all said the same thing, and they were saying with as much activity walking on the sidewalk and things like that, downtown, there were a lot of bicycles and motorized bicycles, electric bicycles, that they almost got hit by. It's getting crowded on sidewalks, and just to bring that to light, that someone went down, I think, to tie their shoe, and then when they went down, looked, turned around, a bike almost ran into them, and it's hard to do with the sidewalks that we have, but as the warmer weather approaches, to be aware of that.
Police officer foot patrols will help that quite a bit, so we need to make sure that we continue to...
They shouldn't be on the sidewalks.
They shouldn't be.
There's already an ordinance.
There is.
Yeah, so I think that was the point of what they were saying, is that, so that would, they would be able to enforce that.
Correct.
Just thank you to, you know, to everything, I'm glad with the rehire of the officer, it seems like our police force, that, where a few months ago, we were in not dire straits, but down a couple people, and now we're at a pretty healthy position. Everyone have a good weekend.
Thanks, sir.
And good luck to Bridgeport, too.
Thank you, David.
Mr. Sanders?
Well, I echo what everyone else said, I, but I'm going to just kind of swing this way, you know, the weather is giving us some nice breaks, a little chilly this afternoon to the evening, but spring is upon us, and tonight, I think we saw more than once the city council looking at progress, looking at opportunities, whether it be expanding certain areas and zones for business opportunities, to working with corporations for business opportunities. We passed a budget that was based basically on personnel salary increases for better living, you know, opportunities for our employees, and to rebuild some of our infrastructure. So I think this is just, I, I just feel like spring is going to bring so many great opportunities to Buchanan, West Virginia. I'm looking forward to it, and, you know, let's go, let's, let's get into the spring weather, we're, what, tomorrow? Is tomorrow spring?
Today.
Today's spring! See, I got up so early that I forgot, I haven't even embraced today, but today is spring.
Yes, it is.
So that's the whole thing.
Where you been?
I've been working.
He's still looking for a shadow.
As there's a forecast for some snow tonight here in the, in the area. Four to six inches above 4,000 feet, so. Anything else? Thank you, sir. If you look at that pie chart up there, that is a good-looking chart, it shows our priorities, and we, I think we've got them right. We've got public safety and our infrastructure as the two most important priorities, and I, I agree with it, and I think we all agree with it, we've, and I echo what Mr. Sanders just said, I think spring is going to, is going to bring a great opportunity for us as we really tackle some, some areas of our community that are physically not in the best shape, and we know it, and we're going to, we're going to get to it. So, we had a great week, two ago, our Chamber of Commerce Annual Dinner, want to congratulate our businessman of the year, James Moore, our businesswoman of the year, Trish Collett, organization of the year, Band of Brothers, our citizen of the year, Curtis Wilkerson, and our business of the year, Coreheart. It is a fantastic event, the chamber does a great job, Tammy does a great job with that event, Mr. Sanders was a great host with the convention center Thursday night, and then the food was excellent by CJ Maggie's, so if you've never been to a chamber event, I really hope that you take the opportunity to go and become a member of the chamber to support the cause. Chamber is always representing the best interest for the business community here within Upsher County. So with that, I wish everybody a great weekend, and try not to, try not to freeze with the snow tonight as we just welcome spring, but it's, it's Buchanan, West Virginia, wait five minutes and the weather will change.
This time in 1993, we had a blizzard.
That was, that was week and a half ago. Okay.
No, it wasn't a week and a half.
Yeah, it was.
9:17, what are you going to do?
It was not.
At 9:17, what are you going to do?
Working on a journey.
I had my surgery, I say.
Brigger gets you a German tonight, Thomas, you're...